John has the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any addition or deletion to the agenda, Kristin?
So I have some, this is Kristin. Just a quick friendly reminder as we get started, just so everybody knows, the meeting is being recorded and the audio file will be submitted to PEG TV. And before anybody speaks this evening, just a friendly reminder to identify yourself with your name so that you can be heard and identified if somebody's listening in. So this is Kristin. I have no official requested additions or deletions. I have a couple of items for old business to be discussed, which I think might just come up during the different reports.
Okay. So there's a few emails have come this week to the Select Board. Probably should be discussed under new business? Or does someone have a feeling of a better place for that?
Well, right now you've got, an audience has got some new faces in it. So you probably ought to ask for everybody to introduce themselves. I am Chuck Wheaton, and I am on Polat Select Board.
I am Ed Cleveland, Select Board member.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, John Malcolm, Select Board member.
Bob?
Bob Jones, Select Board member.
Mike Beecher, Chair of the Select Board.
I'm Kristin Powers, and I'm the Assistant to the Select Board.
How's the best way to go through this screen, Kristin?
So I think what I'll go ahead and do is just read off the names who are here. And if anybody's name is not indicated or called, or would like to go by a different name, you're welcome to correct me if that sounds okay. So we have John Noor, Julie Mack, Frank Nelson, Jennifer Sullivan, Rhonda Schlangen, Jessica Van Ort, John Sabatka, and Keith Mason in attendance tonight as well.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. Minutes. Everything looked to be in order on the minutes from what I read of them today. What does everybody else think?
I'll make, this is John. I'll make a motion to accept.
This is Ed. I will second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Approved. No pre-requested?
This is Kristin. There are no pre-requested appearances this evening. I also have no official announcements from my end. I don't know if any others do.
Do we have a zoning administrators' report for tonight, Kristin?
Yes, so this is Kristin. Our interim zoning administrator, Jonas Rosenthal, emailed me this evening with an updated version of the permits that he currently has, which I've emailed to the board. There look to be a total of about 20 or so. I'm not sure if you all just want to be able to review those via email, or how you'd like me to proceed with discussing those tonight, but...
I didn't see the list, but as of the last list, I didn't see anything that...
Several, there's, someone's, there's a pool, some additions to homes, one, two-family transitioning to a single-family home, some wood sheds, some barns and garages. Looks like some exciting buildings here coming to town. I would say, do you... Go ahead, Mike.
The two-family transitioning to a single-family, was that in West Polat Village?
Um, that, yes. It's, well, it's in Route 153, 2970, Route 153. This is Stefan.
Okay, I think that, I think that's in the village.
Um, there is a farm store, 1035 Route 153.
Yeah.
A deck, a horse stable. There's a two-lot subdivision, minor line, lot adjustment, another in-ground pool, garage, front door entry, closed-in porch, a new home, garage and barn on Warren Switch Road, porch, and raising the height of an existing barn.
Okay. The only, the one I was curious about is if they'll have any effect on the sewer.
Oh, okay. So we, I can, I can ask Jonas to, to respond and update you on that if you'd like.
That would be, that may affect the user, the users, right? So, okay.
I'm not sure.
Was there any, anything?
Hi.
What was that?
Just a quick Google, that's pretty close to the monument. It's right in the village. It is on wastewater.
Okay, so will it be on wastewater then? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, and then the only other thing from Jonas was that there is going to be a DRB hearing scheduled, and the DRB has not had any meetings in the age of COVID yet, and they were hoping to use the Select Board Zoom. I told them that I didn't think it would be any problem at all. I just wanted to do my due diligence and confirm with you guys that that was fine.
No, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't use it.
Okay. Um, I've connected, John Weiss is, has offered to kind of run the meeting through the Zoom, which he's been doing before. So I was gonna go ahead and get him that login information and go from there, but I just wanted to make sure that was okay with you guys.
Does anybody have any reasons why not to, or?
No, it's okay with me. This is Chuck.
Okay.
Otherwise, that's all.
But you can...
And then the Planning Commission, this is Kristin. Tom Collard submitted an email to myself, which I forwarded to the board this evening. There was no meeting last month due to Zoom not working properly, but they're planning on their September meeting on Monday, September 28th. So that was the only official report from the Planning Commission. And then the only other thing I had on our radar was the third remaining, or the third vacancy.
Okay. Any comments about the Planning Commission? Okay. Road Foreman's report?
Hi, guys.
Oh, I think Julie has the question. Sorry.
Julie?
Yeah, I just would like an explanation about what the board's policy and process looks like when they're appointing someone to any seat, including the Planning Commission.
Well, the way that we have done it in the past is when a vacancy opened in one of the, one of the boards, we, we put out a list for candidates, interested parties to apply, and the Planning Commission was, was who went over the, reviewed the applications, and then they made a proposal to the Select Board of who they felt was the best candidate. And the other ones have been, the DRB has been about the only other thing that we have of board members like that for, and we do the same.
So every time there's an appointment, you advertise for the position and then take into consideration the board members?
Yes.
Does this include all of the appointments that are appointed annually at the organizational meeting?
No, those, basically at the organizational meeting, the appointments, the town appointments, in the past, we've always just rolled everybody over unless they've, have said that they didn't want to, or if she's a, if they're, come, if they, someone else expressed interest, and we consider that too. But for the most part, all of those are just rolled over on a yearly basis. Does that answer your questions, Julie, or?
Yeah.
So, Mike, I just have one quick question. So about the current vacancies, so the board, at this point in time, the board is still in the position now to be able to appoint someone for the, the third remaining vacancy. So I know there was something put out. We got a message from Jessica Van Ort indicating that she was, who's here. Um, so I'm not sure if perhaps the board would like to hear from Jessica tonight. And there was the recommendation, there was a recommendation made from the Planning Commission for Jessica. So I'm just wondering if the board wants to act on any of that tonight, or just set some sort of a schedule so that we can, you know, just know how to handle any other interested parties that may contact us, or just what, just have a firmer understanding of what the, the plan's going to be for how we'll handle that.
This is John. I, I have a question about, to substantiate that we're filling unexpired terms. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So two of the, the first term that we appointed John Kabatka, excuse me, Sabatka to, was for Eric's unexpired term that we appointed him, and then he wanted to stay through June. Am I correct? And so he has, his term is, is the unexpired Eric term, which was a three-year term. So that took...
That's correct.
And the other two, one that we appointed and one we still, we now have vacant, expire March 2021. So I just want to establish that. So that's, so those terms with the different Select Board could expire and not be reappointed. Am I correct?
I think that once they get appointed, they run until their term is done. And then they, and...
Would like, no accounts term and Harry Von Meter's term, you know, expire in March 2021.
Yeah, I have the, I have it here, John, and that's correct.
I just wanted to establish that.
Jessica, we'll get to you in one second, please. Thank you. The, yes, the, the appointments would be made to, to finish the remaining time of, of the terms that they're filling. And then when that term expires, they express their interest to stay on and, and, or if someone else is interested. I haven't, we haven't had that occasion, but if someone else was interested, I guess this Planning Commission could, could propose options at that time. But in the past, the only, the only thing we've done is just kept renewing people as long as they've been interested in staying on. Jessica, you had something you wanted to share?
Well, it was actually a question, and you answered it a little bit. I was wondering what happens at the ends of, end of a term? Because of course, on the website, we see that everyone has a term, and I didn't know until you just told me that the terms just rolled over. I mean, I guess I would have assumed that when a term was done, that the town clerk would send out an email, much like she has sent out recently, saying, hey, so-and-so's term is done, and they could keep doing it, or is anyone else interested? So I mean, it honestly wasn't until I got the email that Deb sent out this summer that I knew that it was possible to request to be appointed to a board. I had been unaware that that was a possibility. And I'm sure I'm not the only person who's unaware that this is an option to serve our town that exists for all of us. That, that was all.
Okay. In the past, we've never had anybody challenge anybody's appointment. So that would be, that would be new ground, but it's certainly, it's certainly a possibility. We've, we've just never experienced it. Since I've been on the board, we've never experienced that.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking so much challenging as just, sometimes people have been on a, on the boards that I'm currently on, I'm on for a two-year term, right? I'm on, I'm on some boards. And it's understood that when your term is over, you know, that you might want to retire from it, and someone else might want to come on, you know? So I was just unaware of how it worked, and now I know. So it's nice to learn things.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Frank. For clarification, I spoke with, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Frank.
Uh, I communicated with Ramon Leguizamo City and Town's Attorney, Susan, and she said that the Select Board has the ultimate authority to appoint the Planning Commission, the elected officials. And they can tell, ask for some other help, but ultimately, the data provided to the Select Board is a vetting process that the Select Board has to do ultimately and vote. So, for example, they don't need to have the Planning Commission vet or review candidate and submit a recommendation at all. The Select Board, for example, tonight can approve Jessica, if she's still interested, to fill the open position, which would make it easier at the next meeting with Jessica on the board. The other thing is, is that Eric, as a clarification, when I spoke to him, he said, when he sent in the resignation letter, it was effective then, and he was only gonna stay until June on the Rutland Board. That's what is maybe confused there. Uh, so that's what I was just gonna say, as a clarification. And the Secretary of State said, General Counsel said that the board could expand the number from seven to nine. What's interesting is with, with Wayne being an alternate, he's eight. So you, and Harry was originally saying to Jessica, if you remember correctly, if, if we would like to be a second alternate as an option, and that would be nine. So there would have been nine people at the meetings all the time. And so it wouldn't be a great stretch to expand the number of the board if additional people were interested from seven to nine, given that we have nine people hanging out at the meetings anyways as either members of the commission or alternates. And so this would do away with any alternate status and put any alternates automatically back on, like Wayne would be automatically back on the commission at nine members. So we can do nine members. The Select Board can make up their mind tonight if they feel they've vetted enough. And the, um, that would be just pretty much it, besides the fact that you don't need the commission to vet candidates.
Okay. Thank you for that, Frank. That's very interesting information that you've shared with us. Does anybody else have any comments, or?
Uh, this is John. I think we continue to have a seven-member board, continue to have that.
Julie has her hand raised.
Julie?
I would, just before we go too far away from this point, what I would like, thank you for your explanation about what your process is. It seemed to me that you were saying that every time there's a vacancy, you advertise for it. Now I would like a public explanation tonight as to why there was not an advertisement for Melissa Account's position.
See, uh, the Planning Commission had, had candidates, and, and it was the day after the meeting, I guess. So I suppose that honestly, honestly, they used a candidate pool at that time, but no new, no new ad went out at that time because they had a pool of candidates at the time, I guess is the only thing I can say.
Did you have a pool of candidates two weeks ago?
We had one, the one that was, was remaining from the original, the, the original pool of three.
Was there something about that candidate that disqualified him or her from being appointed that night?
Not in my opinion.
It seems odd to me that you would ignore your policy when there were two candidates, and then stick to your guns about your policy when there was still one candidate? Especially since it's at a cost of $125 to the town every time you advertise for a candidate for a volunteer position. And I know, Mike, that as the chair, that you are the voice, and that you should be addressed specifically when people are asking questions, but, and I thank you for your answer to the question about whether or not that candidate was not qualified, but I would really like to hear that from each and every board member, please.
This is Ed. Exactly what would you like to hear, Julie?
Was there something about the candidate that was on the table two weeks ago that disqualified him or her from being appointed to the Polat Planning Commission?
Not in my mind, there wasn't.
This, this is John. I made the motion to appoint Jessica Van Ort to the Planning Commission, and I couldn't get a second to that motion.
Anybody else want to comment?
Uh, this is Ed again. I guess my comment would be, they were all qualified, so, and they still are.
This is Bob. If we have someone that's interested in the position, I don't think we should let them get away.
So do you want to make a motion that we appoint Jessica tonight?
I will.
This is Kristin. May I ask a quick question?
Yes.
And I, Mike, I'll direct it at you, but I'm curious, is Jessica still interested in the position?
Jessica, are you still interested in the position?
Um, yes, I told Deb, I was about to apply for that, of the clerk position that Kristin had mentioned last time, but then when I saw the ad go up again and heard that Mr. Van Meter was retiring, I contacted Deb and told her to please hold that because I wanted my information to be resubmitted for the new open position. So yes, I am definitely still interested.
Thank you, Jessica. I just wanted to make sure we confirmed that before, so not to interrupt Bob's motion. So is that motion, is that motion still on the table? I can...
Does somebody want to second Bob's motion?
This is John. I'll second that motion.
Is there any more discussion regarding Bob's motion? Okay. Let's have a vote. Chuck, how do you vote?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Jessica. You're now a member of the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I'll work hard.
And also, I, I don't know that there's any real restrictions that said the clerk can't be a member of the board, because right now, the acting clerk is a member of the board, and it has been that way for a while.
Well, if the current, if the current acting clerk doesn't want to continue on as clerk, I'd be willing to take that up as well.
Well, that's something you can discuss at the, the next board meeting, but I think he would willingly share that responsibility with someone else, because he's been doing it for, I don't know, over a year now, and we've, while we've been searching for a new clerk. So thank you for being interested and, and being on the board. Is there any more discussions for the Planning Commission? Okay. Any pre-requested appearances by local citizens and visitors?
We're, uh, we're up to the road foreman's report, actually.
Oh, God, I'm, I'm losing track. I'm looking down at my sheet, not even paying attention. The road foreman, thank you.
Hello, guys. This is Keith. Uh, I sent a thing to Kristin. I guess she forwarded it to you. We've basically been on Betsbridge Road, and then this week, we have started drawing rock with the town of Rupert again. So we'll be at that a few days this week, probably not all week, but at least tomorrow and maybe some with Thursday. And then we'll be back to topping on the Betsbridge Road. So when we're done there, we'll move to the Switch Road and get that topped, and it'll be time to start thinking about some fall grading along the way, too. So that's where we're headed. Um, the big discussion is, I sent a price with that. Did everybody get a chance to look at that on a truck setup?
I did not.
Okay. Um, that is a setup through Viking equipment. Um, basically, I'm, I'm not sure that Woody's is gonna provide what we're looking for with all-electric setup. This is a hydraulic setup with electric pilot controls. And, um, so there's still no hydraulics in the cab or anything, and it's, it's fairly pricey, I realize that, but that is, uh, that's where you start. And, uh, it's hard to get comparative prices. Um, the Tenco, they are basically booked, and their log of work is carrying them into next year. So they don't even want to talk about considering a small truck. Um, they have the state contract, and they're, they have a yard full of state trucks that they have to get through a deadline, or they pay penalties on the bid that they put out. And H.P. Fairfield has pretty much left the state. You have to go to Manchester, New Hampshire, or Skowhegan, Maine now. And yet, we are still in what's considered their territory. So for the Everest equipment, we're not supposed to go to ZWAC down in Steventown, New York, even though it's ridiculously closer. So, um, I would, when you get a chance, I wish you would review that quote that I put in there and, um, and give me some feedback on what you think about it, so.
Mike? This is Chuck. I'll, uh, I'll speak on behalf of myself, but I also am speaking to the rest of the board. That quote, uh, is pretty much an open quote. There's no prices to the immediate right-hand column, which would be your list prices. The final right-hand column would be your normal selling prices. All that is listed is that $38,900 when you paid $49,616 for chassis. So, I mean, it's all stainless, but it's not anything that I would ever approve the way that it's written. And I do believe that Woody deserves an opportunity to price the stainless steel setup, just like this other outfit has attempted. And that's the end of my conversation on this quote.
Uh, I can do that, Chuck, but my concern is, is he's not, doesn't provide what we're looking for. You're looking at a Fisher Plow, and yes, you can get a stainless steel dump body from it.
Stainless is stainless. Stainless is stainless.
Stainless dump body is really the difference. He does not have the plow that we're looking for, and his system is entirely electric. This is a hydraulic system with electric pilot controls. And that is the way to go in this type of a setup, without question. If we were going to go with Woody's setup, we should have got a one-ton pickup truck and put a small sander in it and a Fisher plow. And that's, that's not the route to go when you buy the medium-duty truck. I cannot talk to anybody that has set up that is satisfied with it. They're not dissatisfied with Woody's product or his workmanship, but it's just that that equipment is not designed to do what we do with it. And that is my concern.
John, you had a question?
There was just another conversation going on, and it was distracting. And I wondered if somebody could moot themselves when they aren't talking.
This is Ed. Thanks, John. I'm hearing like another conversation or televisions or something going. Very distracting.
Okay. Has anybody got any more questions about Keith's bid?
Well, this is Ed. The only comment I'm going to make is this, in my opinion, is just another example of COVID. And we are at the mercy of whoever, because you just can't get stuff. And if you do get it, you're lucky to get it, and you're going to pay a price for it.
Well, this equipment is readily available.
Okay, oh, good.
I mean, if we speak for it, you know, we've been through that with the truck process. We priced trucks and then had them disappear before we made a decision and priced some more trucks. And, you know, it's, uh, so, I mean, and I'm not saying jump all over this. I'm just saying, review it and give me some feedback. That's what I'm saying. This is, it is a stainless steel body, and I had some discussions with Mike and Bob prior to going this route and addressed my concerns. And, you know, one concern is, is a body with a subframe. And this is, uh, it's a full enclosed body that sets on a subframe, but it's cross-memberless, so it sets lower. You can actually work over the side of the body, and it is all stainless steel. A lot of the other ones are stainless steel sides and regular steel bottoms. The cross-members in the bottom of that body, on a lot of them, I found out, are not stainless. They're just regular steel. And this is complete stainless, and it will, without question, last the life of a truck and perhaps more. And if you know, in the email that he sent me when he sent that price, that he discussed that it's, can be cheaper if you reduce the stainless steel. That's where the, that's where the dollar value is. And that's what escalates it. But it is a municipal plow with a frame and frame shoes and a hoist on the front of the truck that's not electric. And I can tell you right now, if we buy a Fisher plow, we saw it in the past on the 99 Ford F-550 we bought, that the frame on that plow is going to be shot in three years, the way we use it. And, um, so you can, it's going to be cheaper to purchase right now, but you're going to be purchasing another one in three years. And those municipal plows are hard to wear out. So I just, once again, you're front-loading the value into the front of your price tag, but it shouldn't be any hidden cost down the road. So, um, and, you know, I can shop around and get prices on comparable setups, but this is the route that I'm going to recommend we go. And I think the value of that truck is only made better if you put the right equipment on it. And if you don't put the right equipment on it, then you're not going to get the value out of your investment that you've already put forward, so. And there again, that's my opinion, and I can, you can differ if you'd like. And I'd love to have the discussion with you, but this, this is the way to go. And so I appreciate it if you guys would at least look it over and give me some feedback and what you think. And it is more money than a different setup. And the stainless, additional stainless steel is part of that. And the other part of that is, is you have about $7,500 in a hydraulic setup there, so. I can contact them back and ask them to go away from the stainless steel, complete stainless body, and go to a combination that's mild steel and stainless. Or, you know, we can fluctuate one way or another. But the plow equipment and hydraulic setup, I think, is the way to go, and we should stick with that route.
Now, one of the things that I heard from you, Chuck, was there's no itemization of that, of that quote. Is that one thing that you would like to see before anything else happened? Or would you like to see it spelled out how much they, for the plow, the body, the hydraulics, et cetera?
Well, I wish I had an open, uh, open quote. When I get an opportunity to sell something without listing what's what, just put a price down. I think it needs to have a list price and a sale price. Who knows? We could be paying full list. And I didn't see anything on that quote about it being, I mean, it's on a Dodge 5,500, but I didn't see any price or anything written as far as a quotation for setup of that unit.
No, I think it says on there, "Equipment and Installation," Chuck.
Okay, and we would not need to buy a new sander if we did that, right, Keith?
No, we would not.
Would that cover any type of overhaul on our sander, like a bed chain and stuff like that?
Well, it potentially would. I have a bed chain sitting at the garage for it right now. Would have gone in this fall anyway, Mike. And we may have to buy some sprockets and some, you know, perhaps bearings or something. Some of the tensioners on the front or something. We've done it pretty much standard about every six years. That's what it seems to, when it needs it. And, you know, we're coming right back around on schedule for that right now, so.
So if we went with other options, it would, if we went all electric, we would have to buy a new sander, correct?
We would have to do it different. Originally, they said they could convert our salt and peppers. And it came down to nail down a quote and everything. They realized that it was the full four-yard, nine-foot sander, and they said they don't recommend going fat-size, going electric. They offer it, and they have sold some, but they're fading away from it because they're not being successful. Currently, they're only, Tarko is only doing the electric setup on a two-yard sander, so. Up to two yards, but not anything larger because it's just too, uh, they're too fickle to work with. They require too much power to run, and it's hard to get it through the electric. Those little fine wires and stuff, it doesn't take one kernel of salt in the wrong place, and you get a little corrosion, and then you have a major problem, so. So that's, that's the significance of this other setup, is the electrics are in the cab to a weatherproof box on the back of the cab. And then that does the signaling to your pilot controls for your hydraulic unit that runs everything in the back. It'll be the same sander control that's in our last Mack truck that we bought, the last tandem we set up. It's the same type of control that's in there, which accomplishes what they try to do with the electric setups by keeping everything out of the cab. But the difference is, is that you have an expense in an under-the-hood hydraulic pump that runs off your serpentine belt. And that's what powers the unit, powers your dump body and your plow, so.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
Uh, yeah, this is Ed here. Going over this quote, I don't see anything on it for setup. Um, and as Chuck says, they've got a quote total of $38,900, but there's absolutely nothing that tells how they got to that number.
So would you like me to have him itemize it then?
More detailed.
Okay.
It'd be nice to know what we're being charged for stuff.
And we also need to know how much it would cost if we set it up with a Fisher and an electric body and electric sander.
Okay, I'll do, I'll have Woody put forth a price on his setup then. We've, I've already been in discussion with him anyway. But, um, and to back to what we talked about, Mike Iroko doesn't really want to get into the hydraulics either. They, they will do it if they had nothing else to do, but that's not their specialty. And they would prefer to stick with what they know, so.
Right. Okay.
And you're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to get the plow setup from any of those companies either.
Right. You're going to be able to go with just an easy V Extreme?
That's what I was talking about, which is really as much money as this plow, so.
Mike, this is Ed again. I guess I'd like to clarify. I guess, you know, if this is what it's going to take, is $38,900 to get what we want, okay. But I'd kind of like to know how we got to $38,900.
I'll get that.
I don't think that's much.
No. I was a little surprised when it came through that way anyway. And then you'll see where I emailed him back when he sent it first, and I couldn't see any figures on there, not even the bottom line. And, and for some reason, that format wouldn't come through. So what I did is forwarded it to my personal email, and then the figures were there. And that's what I did at the end of the day-to-day, and that's what I sent to Kristen, so. So I haven't seen this whole package much ahead of you guys, so.
Okay, so you'll bring back more information for the next meeting so that we can be more prepared to make an informed decision?
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on the truck? I see that there was a payment for John Deere, Keith. You apparently feel that that's fair.
Ah, I have not seen anything final. Um, what's the figure?
Julie, there's a payment for John Deere for $49 or something on the warrant?
Yes, I think it was $49.21 or $49.01. It's listed on the warrant.
Okay, yep. I think that's where we're at now.
This is Chuck. Julie's gotten two late notices, Keith, so we kind of got to pay the bill. As it stated.
Well, in my discussion with him, he was going to go through and do, remove some of the stuff that we felt we were potentially paying for twice in duplicate in the fact that it went once and then went back again. And the parking brake issue is separate from what they addressed the first time, but it caused them to have to go back and do, redo some of what we paid for in the first trip. So that was my discussion, and I had heard nothing final back, so.
If I may.
Why don't we just hold that for, hold that for a minute, Julie, and let me come down and review it tomorrow, and I can get on the phone with him and try to hash it out and make sure we're on board before we send it, so.
Okay, I, to be clear, I have one invoice. I have one total. I've not received two. That $49.21 is one invoice.
Okay. So perhaps that's where we're at.
But that's the one you received. Julie, that's the one you received a couple of months ago? A month ago or so? The same invoice?
Mm-hmm. I've not received another invoice.
Okay. Well, um.
It had been billed to us twice. That same amount. Correct, Julie?
No, I have one invoice for $49.21.01, and that's the only thing that I have.
Right.
Anyone planning on telling him we can't hear him?
Keith, you're breaking up. Or you have broken up, perhaps, is the right way of saying. All right.
It's a loss service or something.
Well, shall we, in an interest of time, shall we move forward and come back to it if we can hear Keith?
I would say so. Assessors' report.
Um, so this is Kristen. There was an errors and omissions report that I forwarded you guys, I think on September 2nd, that Karen had sent that needed your attention. Did anybody get a chance to review that, or would you like for me to do a quick recap?
If you could just recap it quickly, I think I remember most of it.
Okay, so there was parcel number 0027-0229. The building on this parcel was burned by the fire department in September of 2019. But the correction to the 2020 grand list reflecting this change was not made before filing the grand list with the town clerk. It's Roland and Elizabeth Gibson. So it's adjusting the grand list price total.
Okay. Does anybody have any problem with that? Somebody want to make a motion that we adjust, we accept that errors and omissions?
This is Ed. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
This is Bob. I'll second it.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike, I wonder, is there a procedure where the listers are notified when something like this happens? Or should we have some process?
I don't really know, but I would presume it would be the property's owner's responsibility to make sure that the listers knew of any changes of the property, or of the buildings on their property, I would, I would assume. But I don't really know any other, any other device to make sure that it all gets back to the, to the listers.
Uh, this is Ed. Unless there was something to do with planning or zoning that when you destroy it, when you take down a building, you have to notify them, I don't know. I've just, you know, that would be.
Right. Right. I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe if you're talking to the listers again, you could ask them how, what would be a system that we could use to ensure that that all, that all changes hands correctly so that the people are not in this position?
This is Kristen. I wonder if, like, when a burn permit is issued for that, for a structure of that instance, or if the fire department is working, it could just be part of that whole permitted process. But I, I I usually let Karen know that you guys have approved things, so I can also check in with her. It just sort of seemed like maybe this was, she was notified of it, but it just wasn't logged in time.
Okay.
I can check in and can, and see what she might like to see for that, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yidok.
Town clerks, ma'am, is there anything else on the assessors that anyone else has to add? Okay, town clerks memo. Could you read that please, Kristen?
Sure. Um, this is Kristen and a memo submitted by Deb Hawkins. Currently, we are in the early throes of the general election. Ballots will be mailed to all active registered voters as of 9/1 by early October. Anyone registering to vote after 9/1 will be mailed a ballot directly from our office. I am sending you a copy of the updated protocol and information sheet that I will be sending out to the public to prepare for what to expect leading up to the general election. Excuse me. I currently have two abatement requests and I'm trying to work out the dynamics of having a meeting whereby we need to go into deliberative session. Would this meeting be able to use the select board Zoom account? Also, Kristen, how do you handle the ethics of deliberative session? I know you can block out non-members. Is the responsibility on each member to preserve the integrity of deliberative session and not allow others to listen in? We are still open by appointment so that we can maintain proper distance between people. However, if someone comes to the door, we do not turn them away. We try to conduct this, we try to conduct as much, as much business outside as we can. This still holds true and will for the foreseeable future. There is still considerable activity in the real estate industry, which means that access to our vault is in high demand. We still require researchers to stay in their work area and we bring books to them. Have a wonderful evening. Stay home, stay safe, stay healthy. Respectfully submitted, Deb. And while I'm chatting, I just would like to add that I did email Deb back and I did explain to her how we handled last meeting with the executive session. Um, stating that I just announced while the meeting was in its recording phase that we'd be going into this. Anybody that is still here would be put into the waiting room, that I paused the recording while we were in executive session, unpause the recording, invited everybody back in, the motion, you know, you made the motion to return to the meeting and then carried on the meeting, so. Um, and I believe that when I read the FAQ and virtual meetings first kind of came about, it was indicated that just as it is when you're in person, it's kind of up to the board members present in the executive or deliberative session to maintain accountability and preserve the ethics of that, so. Just wanted to add that I did explain that to Deb via email when I saw her memo come through.
Okay, good. Any questions at all on the town clerk's report?
My one other question is would she, would you guys be okay with me sharing the Zoom information with Deb as well so that it can be used for abatement hearings?
I would. Anybody have any problem with that?
Not that I can see, so.
It feels appropriate to me. I feel like, you know, it doesn't make sense for everybody to have their own account. And what I've gone ahead and done is I'm, as I finish up with the recordings, I upload them to Peg TV and then I delete them off of our cloud so that there's plenty of room for any other meetings or folks who need to record a meeting to upload it right to our cloud storage. So I think it should be okay.
Okay, sounds good. Town assessors memo?
There are two warrants to be, this is Julie Mack, town treasurer. Um, there are two warrants to be signed. Payroll for the week was $8,957.98. The accounts payable was $57,570.49. General fund monies $10,094.23. Wastewater $603.79. The highway was 55, 830, 45, the bulk of which was lots of rocks from martels. Um, it's been busy the last, last weekend today, extremely busy with tax collection. Still interested in having something in writing from the board for wastewater users explaining the rate increase. Nortrak's bill. Um, it is currently on the warrant, so I don't know what you want me to do regarding that.
I think the way that Keith left it was he'd like to wait for you to mail it till he comes, he's going to meet you in the morning and talk, call over there and try and get clarification from Craig before we mail it.
Okay, but I can go ahead and process it.
I would say that that should be, uh, well, you've already cut, you, you haven't cut the check yet, have you? Right? We've just signed the warrants.
Right.
Right, so I, I would wait for him to see if they come up with a better number. But then it would, it would put us a whole two week cycle out, right?
Well, so it's on the warrant and you can either approve the warrant or not approve the warrant. So if you don't approve, if you want to amend the warrant to exclude that, then it's not on the warrant.
Okay.
Like, I can cut the check and hold the check until the board tells me to send it. But.
This is Chuck. That Nortrak's bill check needs to be sent. It's been more than 30 days. I think it's been more like 45 from when we initially got the first one. Um, waiting for Keith, so I would make the motion that you, we sign the orders and the check goes in the mail tomorrow.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay. So we have a motion made in second to, to approve the warrants with the inclusion of that John Deere bill that's on there. Any more discussion about the warrant? All in favor? Kristen, go ahead.
Sorry, just a quick question to confirm for the discussion minutes. Um, the improvement includes the Nortrak's bill, which is simultane, which is synonymous with John Deere.
Right, Nortrak's John Deere is, is on the, is on the warrant. So we're not going to do anything about it. We're just going to sign the warrants as written.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor Chuck?
Okay, so we're still going to sit on the check?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna send it. And you just made a motion to approve the warrants with the, the Nortrak spell on them. The warrant as written. And Ed seconded now.
Okay, so I'm in favor.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have anything outside Julie?
Sorry. Yes, um, on August 8th, there was a presidential executive order issued deferring payroll tax obligations. The IRS subsequently released guidance, uh, very recently, um, since our last select board meeting in notice 2020-65. The gist of this is that payroll tax could be deferred in employees and specifically it's only the, um, employee share of the social security payroll tax could be deferred. And that, um, it's a, but it's a deferral, not a forgiveness. So any taxes that are not withheld in this final quarter of 2020 would then be, um, required to be paid in the first quarter of next year barring an action by Congress. Um, and it's important to note that any penalties and interest on outstanding balances would begin after the first quarter of next year, beginning on May 1st. Um, I will admit to not fully understanding all of the details and potential consequences of this, but it seems like an accounting mess. And, um, things that I think you should know are that employers are not obligated to offer this deferral to any employees and the employees would be obligated, um, employees would be obligated to pay back any of the taxes that they haven't, um, had withheld. But additionally and importantly, employers would be obligated to pay that tax on any employees that might have opted into the deferral, but then left their employment, whether that be by termination or on their own decision.
Doesn't really sound like all that good of a deal for anybody.
No.
Not really, and I, I just don't know how we would, it would be really difficult and tricky, I think, for us to do it.
Doesn't, to me, it doesn't sound like anything we want to get into. What does the rest of the members think? What do you think Chuck?
Look, I agree with you, Mike. This sounds like a boondoggle.
Yeah. John?
I agree.
Ed, uh, Chuck?
I agree also.
Bob?
I definitely agree.
Okay, so we're not offering it. Sounds good. Anything else Julie?
No.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Julie? Guess not. Okay, emergency management director?
Sorry, I do have a quick question. Is there anything that I should formally put in the minutes about that that we're not, or?
Uh, you can.
It's not.
It was discussed.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if there was any sort of formal, uh, decline of that offer that we should, so, okay. Nothing, nothing more from me, just making sure I have my eyes dotted, not crossed. Okay. Um, well, while I'm here, this is Kristen. I can tell you about the, um, emergency management director's report. And from Bob Marleano, COVID-19 updates continue to be posted daily to the Facebook page to keep residents informed. Participated in two conference calls this month with Vermont Emergency Management and other emergency entities. Received 370 cloth masks from, from Vermont Emergency Management and started to distribute. With the help of Julie Mack, submitted an application to the federal government for the local government expense reimbursement program. This is for reimbursement of COVID-19 costs to the town. Good work, Bob and Julie. I added that. That wasn't a part of Bob's report. Um, any questions on that?
Sounds good to me.
So the health officer monthly report for August, um, received a request to determine rentability of two structures on a landowner's property. Determined that neither structure was habitable for rentals. Letter written confirming findings. Reinspected a multifamily dwelling along with the fire marshal. One apartment will be allowed to be occupied. Asbestos analysis came back positive for asbestos at the Route 149 building and the landlord will have to have a certified contractor remove the offending material before demolition can continue. Completed a procedure for civil penalties for violations of the rental housing code. The health officer can now write tickets for up to $200 per day per violation.
Okay, all sounds good. Anybody have any questions? Okay, wastewater. Um, Jill had a little story she sent to us. Would you mind reading that, Kristen?
Yes, um. Um, so she sent the VTMS updates for August 2020 and the Polit Waste Water Treatment Facility submission files for the same. A1 is scheduled to pump the sludge out of the front septic tank two tomorrow AM, which was on September 4th. Once that is complete, we hope to deep clean the basement tanks next week and will replace the circle chart recorder while on site. Future priorities, next steps in putting out RFQ for next steps, funding eligibility of sludge holding upgrades. Status of manhole covers, has the pavement been removed and the risers added? Question mark. Um, replace air valve near end of force main from Spruce Gum Pump Station. Spruce Gum Pump Station, repair and replace pump number one. Recommend jetting of collection system to get rid of solids building up to prevent future unwelcome clogs. Please let us know if you have any questions. So I know, um, that question about the status of the manhole covers has been on, in her little emails. Do we know the answer to that that I can send off to her?
Well, they found one more in Spruce Gum, but I think that there's still a few that have not been, hadn't, have not been addressed yet. Um, we'll have to get Keith's input on that, so. If we can, uh, shoot him an email with a few of those questions possibly about the manhole covers, just to see what he comes back with.
Okay, and that's all from Jill.
Okay, the RFQ, we're in the process of working on that with Tom Brown, right, Kristen? It's.
Yeah, we wanted to, we're, um, waiting, he wants to know about advertising. And we were figuring out who we wanted to advertise with.
Oh, that's, I, I knew there was something that we were going, it seemed like when we did, I don't know how to find it handily, but when we did the, the bid for the sewer treatment plant, we did, we went with like the Rutland Herald or, or some major, major papers because the local papers isn't going to get to the people that are qualified to do, to, to do that.
Right.
I don't, I don't. I wonder if he has any suggestions even of what, what papers would be appropriate?
I'll ask him.
Or, or possibly Jenny might.
Okay, I'll ask. But yeah, we're moving along with that. We are working on next steps, which would be to get it out for advertising.
Okay, and other than that, I'm, okay. We'll need to try and get some numbers on some of these projects. I'll have to start talking with her about, about some numbers for some of these projects and maybe we can pick one and see if we could get some extra funding or something, but, and the, a line item on the budget or something would be a potential option. And that's about all I have. I haven't heard of any, any issues that they're having at this point, so. And maybe I'll try and remember to, to shoot you some ideas on, on why the, why the sewer bill has gone up so much in the last couple of years, so. Anybody else have any questions on the treatment plant?
Uh, yeah, you know, this is Ed. This is Ed. Oh, excuse me. Go ahead. I thought somebody mentioned something.
Yeah, go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, this is Ed. I guess on the wastewater treatment bill, um, the reason, I think I'm going to simplify this. The reason the rates went up was we had a good deal in the past, a very good deal, and now we don't.
Yes, that's, that's exactly the reason. Jeff was doing it for like 3,300 a month or something like that. And now we're at 4,500 was the best deal we could find and, and one of our options was over six grand, so.
I mean, it's, it's pretty simple to me, but, you know.
And the other, one of the other causes that the, that the operations have gone up is because of the, uh, we've reduced a couple of the hookups. So when you're, when you're dividing, the operating expenses are the same, but then you, you have less hookups to divide them out to, so that also puts a, an increase on them.
And it looks like we're going to lose one more.
Right, it's that one in the village.
Yeah.
So.
This isn't rocket science.
Well, uh, we'll get some information together so that everybody that's on it knows it. Not everybody gets to see, to know all that information from one way or another that, you know, they don't, don't either see the meetings or have a chance to ask anybody what, what the change is.
Hi, this is Frank with a question.
Yes, Frank.
Uh, there's been struggles and Mike, you're going to be congratulated for your efforts on a sewage plant. You've been doing a hell of a job. But the, there's been some question that I had as to what the total fines might have been that the state gave us due to the malfunction of the plant at times. Does anybody? Does anybody have that number that might be good to throw into what Ed was talking about?
Well, I, I don't, I don't have any idea what, what we could be faced with fines, but they would be exorbitant. I know that when the RBCs broke down, some of the fines were looking at thousands of dollars a day. So. But we've never, fortunately, we've never been to that point, and that's, that's not really the biggest cost of the, of the operations, it's the, the daily operations of the plant that have increased so much since Jeff left. Is, I mean, you take $2,000 a month increase, or $1,000 plus dollars a month increased by 120 people and, in the course of a year adds up. So. Anybody else have any questions? Older unfinished business?
Um, this is Kristen. Oh. May I go?
Well, yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, okay, um, so two things for me, so, the Polat Web Coordinator position. Um, we've received one applicant so far, one letter of interest for that position that I forwarded to you all this morning. That came to the email, to the select board email. The original listing had stated that it had asked for letters of inquiry to come in by yesterday. However, the posting wasn't up right after our last meeting, it was up, I believe, at the beginning of last week. So I wasn't sure if the board wanted to take another round. Because I had heard just through verbally that there were, I think, two other people that were also interested that did not get those letters in. And I'm wondering if I put the deadline as a holiday, that might have been a little confusing. So, just letting the board know that that has happened. And, so I don't know if you want to talk about that first, before I get into the next thing?
So, the, which post, were there two different dates on the postings, or the posting was the holiday?
No, so I had, I had sent Elizabeth the confirmation that, that we were able to go ahead and post the position. And so she posted it to the website, but I know Deb was on vacation still when that first went up, so I'm not sure that it went out into the paper. Um, and then in the posting that went on to the website, I had just stated, any letters of interest please to be sent to the select word email by Monday, September 7th. And that was in fact a holiday, and it, it only gave a week's time for people to apply, which I feel is a short period of time, so.
Okay, so, I guess we need to follow through and see if Deb ended up getting it in the paper or not in the time exact.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I will, so I think that it might be in the best interest to give it another round um, for the next meeting, to just give it fair time to get out into the paper and to make sure that the position is actually widely broadcasted.
Is everybody okay with that, because of the fact that we didn't get it in the paper in, in ample time? Okay, I'm seeing, I'm seeing some heads nod, so I'm, I'm going to go along with that, I don't hear any opposition, so.
Okay.
We'll let it go for another, another meeting till the following meeting and.
Okay, so, but please do review the applicant that did come into the inbox and was sent your way. And let me know how you'd like me to proceed with that. And the other item, so I was asked after the last meeting to reach out to the library regarding the progress of the front steps. I did send an email to Mary Lou, and Diane Mack actually emailed me back this evening on behalf of the library, which I forwarded to the select board email accounts. I don't know if anybody got a chance to see that.
This is Ed, I saw.
Okay. So, Ed, do you want to speak to that anymore, or?
No, that's quite all right, so, um, whatever happens, I believe with the steps that, uh, Bob and Chuck should take the, uh, should go ahead with that and, you know, take care of that issue.
Okay.
Seems how they were very critical of the last round, so they should, uh, take it and run with it.
Okay, so we'll have to come up with some alternative plans for the steps.
Yeah, so, in essence, for those who might not have seen the email, it's just, um, the library board shared, on behalf of the library board, Diane shared that there, she's pleased that we're moving forward with improving the steps so that they're safe. That, also, she shared that the town, the select board and the town are responsible for maintaining the library. And if memory serves, there is a file on design by Ralph Nance. Um, and I know that the select board will be diligent in regards to finding the best possible solution for the entry into the library. And the board looks forward to hearing about your next steps as you move to correct the building's failing steps. So. Um, my original email was just wondering if the library had any further thoughts on it, and so that was the response. So I believe that the ball is now back in the town's and select board's court. And that was all else that I had for older unfinished business.
Okay. Tax sale property, John, would you, you and I have done a little bit of research on this. Would you like to bring us up to date on what, what you learned when you dropped that information off?
Yes, uh, I dropped, uh, Mike had asked our lawyer Merrill Bent, our situation with a sale that's coming up, uh, with the yearly, um, anniversary of the date that we acquired it, or we bid on it. And law gives a, a year to the landowner to pay their taxes. And it's coming up October 3rd. Now, apparently, we don't have any rights to do anything as far as evicting, someone from that, or remedying the situation there, um, until we take possession October 3rd. So, uh, I had to be in Manchester anyway, so I dropped, hand-delivered, uh, Julie had gotten me the particulars of the property and the owner, and, uh, the parcel number, et cetera. And I also gave her the a copy of the tax sale announcement from last year. So, that's where we're at with that. In casual conversation with Ms. Bent, I brought up about would the moratorium on evictions, have any effect on us in this situation, she didn't think it would. I don't know the ramifications of all that. When something changes ownership, a parcel disownership. But I, I, that's where we're at until October 3rd.
It's really, and that's, there's nothing we can do until the property comes ours, and then we can just march forward with an eviction notice and et cetera. We'll see what happens. We got one more month, right? Yeah, basically.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for taking care of that, John.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions about that?
Um, Mike, this is Bob, I just wanted to make everyone aware that I have been contacted by some of the neighbors there that are very upset about what does go on there, and they wanted, wanted to know how we were proceeding with, with anything to do with that piece of property.
Okay, well, that's, basically, it's out of our control till we own it, and then, and then we'll try and take as swift a action as possible. Anything else under older unfinished business?
Nothing.
What was that?
Well, this is, this is Chuck. You remember, Mike, uh, we were sent a picture by David Hostley in West Polat Village that showed the water coming down at a high rate of speed. And I stopped there, and I mentioned to you, and I think you were going to stop there, and look also, uh, I don't know if you did, I didn't get an email back from you, but, uh, the biggest issue is, you know, the drains for that street are all on the upper side of the street. So therefore, a lot of the water that runs down just runs down the sidewalk, uh, of a lady, I don't know the number, but, you know, it ends up coming right down to days and where those culverts were initially put in, uh, years ago. That, uh, that's an issue. But the biggest issue, the West Polat Fire Department went to a fire in Polat on, off Route 133 at the Clark property. Uh, and that trip, when that fire truck left the firehouse and made the right-hand turn, it just about knocked the front end out of the truck. That tire dropped into that homemade drain. But the road, when that homemade culvert, or, I'm sorry, manhole drain was put in, it is in the highway, the lane of travel. So, you know, and I think one of our other board members is in the trucking business and has had some issues. I just think that needs to be addressed along with David's, uh, property.
I did get your email, I did get your email and pictures, unfortunately, every time I drive through, I'm something else is on my mind and I don't take the time to stop and evaluate it. One of the problems that we run into is that is a state-aided highway, so the state ultimately has control on, on what happens in that area, so. To, to do a major improvement there, I'm, I'm hoping that when, if we work with, we've reached out to Devon to, to do a, a study of that intersection too, from the, from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And maybe we can do something, they'll incorporate better, better drainage also, but it is, it's unfortunate, there's really nothing you can do about that culvert and the way it is with everything in, with the monument in the middle of the road there. And I've watched, can't even stay on their own, they have to take more road than, than is their share just to make it up that corner without the trailer falling into that hole. So, it all, that comes back to a state issue, Ed?
This is Frank.
I'm just going to say, isn't there some way that some craftsmen could, that works with iron or whatever, make a grate that would fit that?
I guess it could be evaluated, um.
Or, or contact the state and tell them, you know, hey, you've got a situation down here that you've got to take care of. That's been an ongoing problem now for years. We're lucky that somebody hasn't, you know, a bicyclist drop into that or, you know.
Jennifer, do you have a question?
This is comment.
I was just going to say, I walk right by that every day when I go to the post office, and, um, you know, it's, take your life in your hands just going by there, because if there is a truck or a car is driving too fast, we've already talked about that. You know, when I'm right there, it's, it's, because it takes a big chunk out of the road.
I'll, I'll talk to Keith some more and see if we can reach out to the state and see, see what, see who wants to claim responsibility for that. But I know that there's only so much we can do, but I'll talk to Keith some more about that.
Um, this is Ed, I'm sorry, I, listening to her made me remember, um, once again, what about the speeding issue over there? Is our constable going to set up radar, I'm pretty sure he has one, what's, what's going to happen with these speeders?
Did you get any input back, you, you gave Mr. Ricardan email, right, Kristen? And did you have any input back from him?
Sorry, hold on Frank, I'm going to mute you, um, just while I'm talking, because I'm getting a lot of feedback. Um, so this is Kristen, I did reach out to Dave Ricard, and I explained the whole thing to him, and Mike, he said that he was wanting to touch base with you. And that he was planning on reaching out to you to coordinate, because he does better with in-person meetings. But I did, I sent him following two meetings ago when we had first discussed it, and I said I would reach out. I did reach out to him and shared all of our discussions, so.
I'll tell you that the word on the street is that he's not, no one really expects that he will do anything. I don't know the man, and I've only lived here for a year, but that's pretty much the feedback that I've gotten. And I have noticed that the majority of the offenders going up by my house are pickup trucks from New York with New York plates. And they're loud, I don't know if they require mufflers in New York or, or not, but, um, it's, it's, yeah, pretty much a constant problem.
Okay, well, we'll try and get some input, I'll, I'll try and get ahold of Dave and see if they can arrange a meeting or something.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is, uh, this is John Noor. Um, I, uh, two, two meetings ago, uh, it was suggested that, uh, with the traffic study going on in Polat, that maybe a traffic study could piggyback, uh, here in West Polat, is, is that, is that still a possibility?
So Kristen, can you answer?
I can answer that, Mike, if you'd like, or?
Yes, please do, John.
Yes, we're, we're, uh, this Devon Neary, Neary from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, is going to, is working on a grant for us in the Polat intersection. And we're also going to have him and, uh, look into the West Polat situation too. It won't involve this grant, but it will involve, uh, a study of that situation in West Polat as a separate study.
Thank you.
This is Frank, with a question?
Go ahead, Frank.
After the last meeting, I talked to a few people on, on the street, and several people, um, came up with an idea, which is interesting, that you could put a traffic circle in there. And that would address any signage, because everybody would have to keep right through the traffic circle. Uh, and maybe address a speed issue through the traffic circle, slowing things down in the middle of town as well. Uh, and I just wanted to offer that, other than the fact that the sidewalks are many places below the grade, below the road. Uh, so sidewalks need work, and that center traffic circle could need work if they could, if the state wanted to look at both, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll see what, see what direction we go with, with Devon, I'm sure they'll explore all options. Is there any more, our older unfinished business? Nothing? Okay, new business?
I just had one thing real quick, if I may, this is Julie.
Go ahead, Julie.
I know that I was a little bit harsh two weeks ago about your lack of pointing someone to the board, and I, um, I'm not offering an apology. someone to the board, and I, um, I'm not offering an apology because I'm not sorry that I spoke up. Um, I just would like to make it clear that to me, um, I think it's important that we look at, um, the power that you have in appointments, and that you think a little bit more carefully about that when you do it. Um, I'm not familiar with our most recent census results, but I'm gonna go out on a limb and guess that at least fifty percent of the population in Pollet is female. We do not have that equal representation on boards in this town, not even close, and I think that it's just important to come from a place of thinking clearly about that. I don't think that sexism is always an active decision to do a sexist thing. I think sometimes it is as simple as not paying attention to who we put where and when and how. So I would just like that, that, that be a thought that people are consciously aware of when they're making decisions.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Ed. I don't know what averages she is looking for, but I'm gonna go out on a limb here, and I think that in town, there's perhaps sixteen women and twenty-two men, perhaps, that serve the town in one capacity or another, so I don't know, you know, do we need a fifty-fifty average? What's your, you know, evidently you get upset with someone that was appointed, and now, you know, I guess, what's, what do you want? Do you want fifty-fifty? Sixty-forty? I don't know. You tell me. And I'm not sure if those numbers are correct, but I think they're pretty close.
So I, I just, I disagree. I mean, if you're talking about women working in the town, that's not women making decision, that's women, uh, doing work.
I'm not, uh, what do you mean? They're making decisions the same as the guy? Everybody's making decisions.
No, Chuck, I don't make decision, or Ed, I don't make decisions about bills that are paid or rates that are set. You do.
Because of input from what? The listers and the grand list and all that?
It does not mean that I'm a decision maker.
Okay, I think both of us have, have got our points out, and there's been several issues, uh, letters that have come up in regarding of the last appointment to the planning commission, and I don't. I don't feel that, that, that I, as a board member, have, have any, any kind of bias, but that's, and I do understand that it's important to make sure that everyone is, is properly represented in a. Anybody else have any comments to say? Okay.
I'll speak, Mike. Mike?
Okay, go ahead, Chuck.
This is Chuck. Um, I don't have any problems with any sex involved in any town organization, and I would honor you, say that to Jessica, I'm glad that you came on board, and hope everything goes well. And with that, I make a motion, if there's no further business, that we would now adjourn.
Well, we have a public comment session that we need to go over first, please. Does anybody have any public comment that they wish to make tonight at this meeting?
Well, I do now. Uh, this is Ed, um, and I would just like to say that I would like to respond to recent letters to the board regarding the hiring of a woman to do the Pollet Planning Commission. For the record, this statement is my own, as I do not know how the rest of the select board feels or believes. The letter from Mr. Post, I find his accusations to be totally unfounded, mean-spirited, and are meant to do nothing but incite negative emotions. Also, I believe that I have never met Mr. Post, and for him to accuse me or any other board member of being, and I quote, sexist, prejudiced, and retrogressive, is irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Anyone else want to make any public comment at tonight's meeting?
I would just thank Julie for her comments, and I, I think they are important just to, uh, keep in mind.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hearing no other public comment? Chuck, do you wanna make your motion?
I make a motion that we would now adjourn tonight's meeting.
I hear a second. Do you second to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a good evening.